I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Eastside County Committee of School Board of Education. Order, welcome those of you who are here. Remind you that Eastside County Schools empowers all students to become productive, responsible citizens in an ever-changing global society. I'd ask for approval of the agenda. Okay, we have motion second to approve the agenda. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries, five zero. Move on to the consent items.
Any questions on the minutes? Financial reports, Frank and I, well, obviously, we have nothing to reset on during the first month, but when we get our audits scheduled for September, we'll get the books closed on the two old districts and get final financial reports to either at the August or September meeting now and get those approved.
So, the control systems, the point one is that, well, it says repair, but I just wonder why it was repaired before.
We are doing several projects in both the SAC Elementary and the Lakeview building. And Kevin, did you look through the bills? I think this one was on the kitchen in the SAC Elementary.
The elementary, yeah.
Yeah.
I didn't look that closely, but that's a major project. And the two bracket capital projects, those are what we're working on this summer, right?
Yes.
It's the projects that we're working on this summer.
Any other questions on the bills? So, I will say there's, we started a new accounting system on July 1st, so there are more bills in the office. And Danae and Jennifer and I are working on those, so you'll probably see a bigger list in October or August than this one. And October, too. So, with that in mind, I would entertain a motion to approve the bill to Albright Oil for 94665.
Second.
Motion in a second. If there's no other discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. I've entertained a motion to approve the bills to Lakeview Lumber and Wall Lake Lumber for a total of $2,004.22 and $12 cents.
So, Lou.
Second motion from Brent and a second from Lisa. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, four zero. And then I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes and all remaining bills on account.
I'll make that motion.
Motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, five zero.
Thank you. Let's move to reports. Dr. Feeny?
I was gonna have us do the, recite the mission statement, but you did that nicely in the welcome, so it was over my apology for forgetting to list that as part of the agenda normally. That's there and I just may have got it. Couple things updating that aren't part of the agenda later, that we talked about, the technology plans for the summer and shared that with the staff before the school year was out, that we'll be working cooperatively with both Area 8 and also Iowa Computer Bureau out of SAC City in meeting needs of the new network and fixing things. So, it's a different approach than what we've had in the past. Thus far, we've been thrilled this summer with the work that's being done. The new servers are being formatted, or whatever you call new servers, what they do to them at Area 8, and we'll be out to install them sometime in the next couple of weeks, and so that's moving along. I put that our new website should be active in the next couple of days and went active today, actually, if you've been on the website at all. And we found a few things that need to be fixed, which we're working on, and so that's going to be a much better communication tool as that evolves. Have you noticed on the front page, how many of you, have any of you looked at it today?
My daughter sat on it, so I saw it.
There's a scrolling of four pictures on the front page, and it's supposed to be a picture of all four of our buildings, and for whatever reason, a picture of mountains comes up on number four. And I don't think that's present anywhere within our district, so we'll be adding it to the pictures. Our intent with the website is that to make it much more user-friendly for the public and internally as well, and really channel communication, that becoming the communication hub for the district. Business office now has a toll-free number, 877-665-5001. And we did that when we combined the two business offices, so it's, no one in the district has a long districts call to get to the business office. Mentioned Comprehensive School Improvement Plan, and Julie Meyer and I have been working on that, and we'll bring the principals in when they come back in a couple of weeks full-time, and that's due in September, and there'll be more board involvement with that as it unfolds. Preschool workshop scheduled for Monday and Tuesday, August 22nd and 23rd, and again, would invite the board to be present, especially the first morning.
You know what times those are?
We're still, we're within a day of being able to tell you that, Chris, because depends when the open house is and what time we start, so we'll get that out to everybody. I think probably that's enough at this point. I did mention that, you know, the Iowa Association of School Boards made the news again here with the moving register. About every two weeks, something seems to be coming down, and at some point, we're gonna want to, as a board, have a discussion about that. For this year, we're committed to the services that are provided by IASB as well as ISFIS, because right now, there's still a difference between the two organizations, and we'd like the services of both. At some point, we'll probably wanna cut back and just have the support on that's coming. The other thing is, and this'll lead into some of the rest of the agenda, is that I'm taking every opportunity possible to speak with the public regarding the instructional support levy, which will be coming up in the pipe here, and being sure that, trying to raise awareness and answer questions, and as that evolves, hopefully, we'll be able to get people to understand that and answer any questions, so that's what I've got. And then you're gonna say I can just keep going. Any questions or comments? Okay. Did you, excuse me, did you get a chance to talk to Steve at all? Steve Nitsman? About the projects, how they're coming along?
Yep.
That's next?
Okay.
Overachiever.
My fault.
I just take it? Keep running with it, can you? All right, here's, there's a list of at least what Steve and I were able to do this morning in putting together a list and make sure we get that to the media folks, too. It's not an all-inclusive list, but it gives you a pretty good snapshot of where we're at by building with the projects, and I've tried to get around, I didn't make Wall Lake Elementary today, but I was in the other three buildings and talking to the folks and where we're at. We'll just run through some of the highlights there. They should've finished the roofing project at SAC Elementary today, as far as the roof piece of it. The metalworkers still have a day or two, and then the painters have to finish the painting of the overhang things, whatever they are. And for the public, that's, white is primer, we're not going with white. I've heard that rumblings. How could you pick white? We didn't. It's a primer, it'll match the flashing on the top. Carpet, it kinda talks about there, and sometime in the next couple of weeks, they'll be putting the carpet in the hallways at SAC Elementary. Painting is basically done in the building, and if, next month, hopefully, we'll have our meeting up there and we can tour. SAC Elementary really, 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 really got a, is getting a great facelift, and it's gonna be an awesome-looking building. Playground, they actually delivered the equipment today for both SAC Playground, or the SAC Playground, the SAC Preschool Playground, and the Wall Lake Preschool. That was all delivered today, and they started the installation of the big playground at SAC Elementary this afternoon. They anticipate being done in SAC on Thursday, barring, you know, hot weather. And then from there, they'll move to Wall Lake for the installation of the preschool piece of equipment. Restrooms, all the partitions are there, painting has been done. Moving to Wall Lake Elementary, not as many projects this summer. Carpet has moved along, and Steve has that all planned out, and most of it goes in this week. Playground a little bit later. And then if you remember when we took down the, we asked you to take down an old pole building last fall and opened up a courtyard, and there's a natural gas line that's above ground, that will be, once they get the playground done, then that will be buried before school starts. And then some people have asked, what's the plan for that area? The plan at this point is to clean up the back of the building and some of that, there's some trim work that needs to be done and make that green space, and then there's a cement pad that was saved that can be used for parking. And we have been in no hurry to try to figure out something else to put in there truly. That building doesn't have a ton of green space, so anytime you can get some green grass, it's a good thing, so we'll come back to that, but that's what's happening at Wall Lake Elementary. At the middle school, I went over today and looked in, the restrooms are all gutted, and the Trazo folks have been there to build up the platform, and remember the urinals in the middle school went all the way down into the floor, that's all been patched over. And then the rest of it's just getting the guys there, and the construction will be sometime later this week, and then after that, the plumbers follow them, and it's on target, and it's going to be so much better. Poke my head in the science room today, that's Carol Dickens' room upstairs, and they were putting the new floor in today, vinyl, whatever it is. And then they'll get new tabletops, that'll come after the flooring's done. Auditorium carpet is ready to go, it's just a matter of when Keith gets there to do it. So, things in all three of the buildings are moving fine. At the high school, there's some, I guess I encourage you to take a walk after the building, or after the building, after the meeting. We'll walk briskly, 'cause it's pretty warm out there, but you can see what's happened. The new family and consumer science room, the floor is done, electrician's doing their thing, then the plumbers will be in, cabinets are being made, that all has to just be timed and fall together, and everything's in place for that to be good. Appliances are ordered and ready to go. I guess I didn't mention there, but they've been, they've been working getting electricity there this week up in the attic, that's not a good place to be this week, running time of it, but, and then Carroll Systems has done their thing at this point with the heating and the cooling for both the office and that area. Central office downstairs, we can show to you, and what are the business office, everything's on schedule there as well. You can see how that space, most people looked at the space and said, how on earth, didn't imagine that there was that much space in there. But you'll see, it really is an efficient use of office space, as well as adding a conference room that can be used for the district and for the high school, but that's moving along just like we want it to as well. The old family and consumer science room, that renovation is done, we did all that internally, they've moved Denise Waters in, that's her new classroom. Small gym cafeteria, you wouldn't notice much of anything in there, frankly. We were going to take out a section of bleachers for storage of cafeteria tables, they figured out how to alter the entrance underneath the bleachers and then get a bunch of stuff out of there, and the tables will be fine, so the bleachers will look intact, nothing will look different there. The old cafeteria, we created a space for storage of school records in the back, that was a large room, that will be very useful in pulling together all the school records in one place, it'll just be better. And then the rest of it will be used as a classroom. Right now, it's a place where a lot of stuff has been set while all these other projects are going on, so if we poke our head in there, don't be offended that it looks kinda junky right now. Stuff's gotta be somewhere. Whiteboards and cafeteria tables are all ordered, a matter of when they get here, and then some are cleaning and painting. I tell you what, if you get a chance to thank the custodians, thank them. They have worked their tails off, and obviously, the conditions, especially right now, are challenging. I walked, I spent about 15 minutes at the middle school today, and I was drenched just walking around doing nothing, and those folks are working very hard. We're on schedule, but again, remember how ambitious the summer plan was, but it's moving along, and all of the stuff that's being done is gonna, ultimately, it's gonna make it better for kids, and so it's good stuff. Questions? They are. Working hard.
Any questions or comments? Move on to item C, board election information. I'll let John take.
Papers have been available since July 11th, we have one seat open. Papers are due August 4th at 5:00 PM in our office, so if, Chris already has his papers, but if you ever anybody else, you need to get ahold of us, or go to the state auditor's website, it's available online, but they are due back to our office by August 4th, 5:00 PM. Any questions about that?
You have those papers available on the school website for download as PDF.
You know, we don't yet. We can consider that, but the technology ladies in Colorado, the other ones in Texas, and I don't know how to do it, so.
Right.
I would encourage them to give us a call, we'll find a way to get them to them, and I also sent a couple sets up to the SAC office, so the SAC Elementary office, P. Kitchen, Jennifer, she gets them. Okay? Thanks.
Questions or comments? Okay, let's move on to 5A unfinished business, discuss and/or approve the instructional support levy.
You know, just a refresher for everyone, we started talking about the instructional support levy during the last school year, we probably spent three or four different meetings at least referring to it. What we were asked to do is to look at bringing back to the board for consideration, running it, the instructional support program really is the correct term, in conjunction with the fall election in September, or for the board election on September 13th. And that's the materials that I've provided for you as the process. Everything with the instructional support program is, it's pretty tight timeline, has to be done in certain time periods. And just as a refresher also for the public, is that with the instructional support program, there's several options. One can be board-approved for up to a five-year period, and then another one is taken to the vote of the public up to a maximum of 10 years. Then you'll have decisions to make on funding of the instructional support program, can be property tax or a combination of property tax and income surtax. It's not an option to use only income surtax, you have to have a minimum of a dollar of property tax. All of that is fine, and we're gonna continue to try to bring more and more information, not just to the board, but to the public. The real decision that you have tonight is whether you wish to pursue instructional support levy. And if you do, and going on past what you've told us in the past, John and I, is to pursue that for 10, up to a maximum of 10 years and run it with the election, so the materials that are provided to you do that. Because of timelines and the way the code reads, what I'm asking you to do is actually, if, again stressing if, it's your decision, this is just me talking, if you want to pursue the instructional support levy for a 10-year period with voter approval, I would encourage you to pass two different resolutions. One that says we want to consider the property tax only, and a second resolution that says we want to consider instructional support levy with property tax and income surtax. What that does then is force two public hearings on August 1st, but it gives you an opportunity to spend the next two weeks processing what it is you believe to be in the best interest of the district, as well as talking to the public for two, for a couple of weeks. Between now and August 1st, you don't have to make that decision tonight, but that decision would have to come on August 1st. Okay? And that's truthfully, and I hope you like it, and if you don't, it's too late, no, it's not too late, we can change something. But we structured it that way specifically so that you have ample time to listen to people, talk to people, ask questions, answer questions, whatever it takes to make an informed decision as a board. So, really, what I'm asking for tonight then is, what I'm recommending is passage of two resolutions, and the language is all in the bag. And we can certainly answer questions, and I'm not trying to ram this or railroad it or anything else, but that's the, just trying to talk process that has to take place to do this legally.
What does a dollar generate, or what will it generate roughly?
$300,000.
How much?
$300,000.
$300,000? And that's the minimum? If we decide, if this would all go through and it would pass, and we'd say, okay, this year, we're gonna levy for it, or this next year, coming year, we levy for it, we get $300,000. If we decided that we didn't want to levy for it, for whatever reason, either we didn't need the money or didn't want us make the taxpayers have the burden that year, that's something we could certainly do, too, correctly? Would we have a vote of say?
Annually, when we have our budget here, we improve our budget, and this will be part of that, and we can go year by year from 0% up to whatever we have approved at the threshold.
Okay. And Brent, I can just add one thing, you asked a question about what would a dollar generate? You know, you can go up to 10% of, what is it, John, 560,000?
Yeah, it'd be just over $500,000.
That's what we could generate as a maximum, and I would, I would ask that the board consider asking for approval of the maximum with the caveat of what Brent just said, is you don't have to do that, you don't have to, you don't have to do this, you get a year-by-year decision, and it's, if we make that decision one year, that lasts the whole year, from July to during the fiscal year.
Well, I've always been a supporter of having the instructional support levy based on several things. One is that we know that we're in a declining enrollment situation, and I don't see anything that's going to reverse that. And so, if we continue to have a declining enrollment and generate fewer dollars in the general fund from the state, if we want to continue to maintain the kind of programs that we've been maintaining, we're going to have to come up with additional funds, and this is the place that I would think that you could get that. So, for that reason alone, I think it's a good idea, but also, we've been operating for several years now on incentive monies for whole-grade sharing and reorganization. If I'm not mistaken, in three years, those are all going to evaporate, and then those one-time monies are gone, and we're going to have to have something to sustain us down the road. And that coupled with the declining enrollment, I think, is justification for having this program in place. I would be afraid to go forward without it. I don't want to be in a position where we don't do anything, and five or six years down the road, now we're in a financial bind, and people are saying, didn't you guys have any kind of a, of a plan for this? Didn't you know this was coming? You conduct yourselves like the federal government.
Well, we do have some flexibility every year, right?
Absolutely. And the groups that I've spoken to, I've been very upfront that right now, the amount of money that we have in reserve is exactly where it should be, and that there really isn't a need right now, and that was a decision that you as a board made earlier. What I'm asking is for consideration, and Chuck said it eloquently, is we're not really thinking about right now, we're thinking about a year from now, two years from now, three years from now. And I've used the term that it's somewhat as an insurance policy for maintenance of programs. Now, granted, if say enrollment really drops, you would, I mean, it's basic economics, if you have less money, you have to cut money, you either cut the expenses, or you raise the revenue, or do both. And as I've explained to the groups that I've spoken to, we certainly want to be good fiscal managers of the taxpayer money, and that means watching it closely and tightening the belt as necessary. But when you get to a point, the only way you really make back big money in a school budget is laying on people and cutting programs. That starts impacting kids, and what I guess I'm passionate about is making sure that we've set the table, that that doesn't have to happen. I'm not saying that it will, but we have to be thinking out two, three, four years ahead, and I would encourage the board to say enrollment, we got a spike of enrollment, which I would not anticipate based on any piece of data I've seen, but if that were to happen and there wasn't a need to levy this, don't. We're not a bank, but, all right, no shush. I think our programs, I don't go out and look at the other schools, but I think our programs in this school are the best around here, and I'm really proud to be able to say that I'm, you know, part of Eastside County because, because of our programs, and I think it's very important for our kids for us to keep those, so I think this is an important thing, too. And yet, we may not have to use it, and, you know, we'll use our head, and if we don't have to use it, we won't, but I think it's good to have it there, just in case.
Okay, this is a question for John. How much, how much money is the incentive program bringing in for a year right now? I'm not looking for the exact dollar.
Well, I haven't looked at it a long time. Chris, I think it's around $275,000, maybe $300,000.
How would the, how would the maximum levy compare to that in a year time?
The maximum levy we're looking at would be $550,000. If it was in place this year, our max was $550,000 roughly.
How, how long could we sustain the current programs and staff level with the maximum levy? How many years would, until that would start to be a problem with the declining enrollment?
It's hard to know the answer to that question, because.
Well, let's say it stays at the current rate that it's at.
Well, you have the governor who's gonna see to it that we get, you know, no extra money this year.
Right.
And he's gonna be very gracious and give us 2% next year.
Not next year yet, though, making sure.
That's, that's down the road a ways, you know, and we, we asked for 4% this year and thought that that was low, but we, we thought we could find a way to make it with that, but I just don't know where the money's going to come from if we don't put something in place to protect ourselves.
Well, let's say, let's say it stays at 0 or 2% for the next 10 years during the course of this levy, and you stay at the maximum levy and the student enrollment keeps declining at the same rate, are good to go for 10 years, or is there gonna be a problem five, seven years out?
Yes, Frank, you can help me, but as, over the last three years, two of which we've had the incentive money for sharing, we've been able to operate a budget that drew our surpluses, so that's been a positive. Last year's audits aren't in, and we did not have incentive money last year, so I think you're gonna see, when the audits come through, I would expect us to see fairly flat, we'll call it a flat return. And so, this incentive money should help us get through the next couple of years. I would like to be able to sit here and say, yeah, if we do this, we're good to go for 10 years, but I could be wrong.
And I think, those are good questions, and the other thing is, you know, if you're declining two to five students a year is different than if you're going down 20 to 30, and we'll have some spikes where our enrollment goes up based on our current enrollment, and other times that it goes down, but. But, and I don't remember the exact figures without looking it up, but when John was working on the aid and levy worksheet, we looked at what the, ultimately, the money, extra money for consolidation was this year, and it really was a wash for the 22 students or whatever it is that we lost. So that was a break even for this year's budget. And so it's a difficult question to ask. And I think we have to be honest too, that, you know, if for some reason enrollment drops out, we may have to look at eliminating some positions. I mean, that's fiscal, that's wise fiscal management. We're not asking just for the moon. We understand that it's a two-edged, or two-sided coin, but what we really want is to make sure that that's a last resort, because we don't want to hurt kids in the process.
Does everyone agree that it's positions before programs, if it comes to that?
Pardon me?
Does everyone agree that it's positions before programs if it comes to that?
No, I think that'd be a situation by situation, probably instantly. It's kind of hard to just say yes to that.
And the two are almost synonymous in a lot of cases.
Right.
I mean, you cut, get rid of a teacher, you cut a position.
You cut a position.
I mean, the two go.
Well, in some cases, the way the law is now in Iowa, you, you can't cut the position necessarily. It's easier to cut the program than just to cut the position. And hopefully, we'll get some of that changed. But in this state, we have a problem, and I suppose we have a lot of this in other states, but we have a Department of Education, and then we have a legislature that acts like a Department of Education. And we're getting all kinds of mandates from both of those bodies that cost money, but there's no money that comes with them to run the programs. And they're going to expect more and more. Every day in the paper, you can read about how we should, or how, how the Des Moines Register would improve the education program in the state, and how this person would. I mean, that's every Sunday and weekly. So all that is going to continue to come, and it's going to mean expenditure of more dollars to get the job done.
If you choose to go forward, these are the types of things we can talk more about at public, and you know, the questions that we want to address. The issue right in front of you tonight is, pursue or not to pursue?
I would ask for a motion to pass Resolution 1 and 2, or a motion singly, to pass each one singly, so that we can move forward with the decision. That's, that's what, we definitely got to move forward.
Right.
I make the motion for Resolution 1, separate. The Resolution Run reads, pursue instructional support program and fund through a combination of property tax and income surtax.
Second.
We have a motion in the second to approve the resolution to consider participating in the instructional support program to a combination of property tax and income surtax. Can make a roll call vote. Lisa.
Yes.
Marty.
Yes.
Chris.
Yes.
Brent?
Yes.
Chuck?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
I'm going to make a second motion.
Good.
For Resolution 2, to pursue the ISP and fund only the property tax.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in the second to approve the resolution to consider participation in the instructional support program funded through property tax. Marty?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Brent?
Yes.
Chuck?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
And as an outgrowth of that process is setting a public hearing, which has been scheduled, if it's okay, you should approve that, I guess. Six o'clock PM on Monday, August 1st.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion in the second. Any discussion? Those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, the same, motion carries five zero.
Have we settled a location for that?
Yeah.
At the high school library.
High school library.
Starting to get it publicized.
Yeah. And I should probably say that publicly, is that, I mean, just in the spirit of transparency, that was sent out, and I made sure you were all aware that it was sent out because of the publication deadlines needed to be to the printed newspapers by Thursday of last week. That notice was sent out, so it will appear in all three newspapers, as well as it's on Curtis' site. Understanding that had you decided not to pursue the instructional support levy, we would have rescinded that, obviously, but it's the reality of the timelines and when papers are published.
I think that brings us to discussion and/or approval of the Iowa Association of School Board's legislative action priorities.
I guess what I would suggest there is, there's something out of the list that IASB provided that if you're passionate about, make your case. What I'd like to do is just jot a few notes down, and whatever you as a board believe the top three, four, or five are, then I'll put it in the paperwork and get it to ISB. If you're okay with that. So in other words, I'm all ears.
So if, like on number six on the first page there, sports funding to ensure all three and four-year-olds, that says 2011 ISP priority, but we don't have to say we want that?
No, you still would, that was last year's priority.
Okay.
But it says 2011.
Also, we would have to restate.
I have that one circled.
Preschool funding is what you're really getting at?
And then also allowing you to count the four-year-olds in your enrollment count.
Yeah, it's number six on the first page there, Kevin.
Okay. And just assuming that the governor signs it at the end of July here, they move the point six to preschool next year, back to point five. Point five of the full student is what will be reimbursed for preschool. That changed mildly, assuming it signs it.
Right.
Who knows? Okay, so preschool funding?
Yeah, it's number six. They're, they're asking for the top five, so if anybody else has new ones around.
Well, I think 10 is important, supporting a law of, really, that encourages continuous school approval, reflects actual cost increases.
I agree with that one too.
Yeah. Getting out at a time would matter.
You say that?
Before, before July 1st.
Yeah, it's like this year, you know? How could you possibly deal with this, like, using good fiscal practices, the way they, they tell you to do things right, and then they don't do it right at their level?
Well, that's just it, they tell you how to, they tell you how to do it, but they don't have to follow that.
They don't have to do it right on their end.
Right. There were a few politics going on, and the education stuff was the ball, most back and forth, pretty obvious.
I also had 21.
I did too.
That's support the use of physical plant and equipment levy funds to purchase computer software, payment of software licensing fees, and et cetera. I mean, that is very expensive.
I think, I think the situation that we're going through right now with redoing all of our computers, you know, I think it's important for us.
That's just going to get you, it's not the goal, right?
Yeah.
I might as well pass number 22, because they, number 20 also, because they keep messing with it every year. A matter of school start time.
So far, I have three things down. And that's, and that's fine.
Twenty would be the four.
I bet you were just looking at my mail.
You got one, Brent?
Nope. Thirty-two, Brent?
Thirty-two?
We're going to carry.
Yeah, that's just a wish list.
You can say it.
It's kind of a wish list.
That's not a priority.
I'd like to stand up on the floor and present this resolution, resolve that either the Department of Education be abolished, or the legislature refrain from issuing educational directives and mandates affecting the public schools.
I like that.
Which one was that one?
As sloppy as it is.
That's number, that's number 40, Chuck.
We can send in four, that's fine.
I agree.
But we do need, what's that front page say, Curtis? We do just need a motion to approve those resolutions, whatever number it is.
So far, I have down six, 10, 20, and 21.
I'll make that motion to send them to, IASB as our priorities listed.
Second.
I have a motion second to submit the numbers where Congress were, to the IASB legislation, legislating. Does that make sense? I guess it is. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five zero.
And if at all humanly possible, in that packet from ISB is the advocacy survey, it'd be really nice if there were, each of you had one of those filled out at some point and got to the advocacy survey. I think they wanted that individually. Or John, if you remember. Or if you'd like me to fill that out, I can do that too.
Sure.
Yeah.
We did that.
I'll do it. Thank you. You like me and what the other?
Okay, let's move to new business, discuss and approve board policy 210.2, regular meetings. We do have a time and a place for regular meetings. We have not identified by that too well in the past year. But we can always rationalize by saying we're working with another district to making the schedules meet and things like that. But now, we should probably try to find a time to meet, set it more or less.
Try to stay with them.
Cast it in stone.
I don't have a problem with the third Monday, but I would like to change the time to six, even 5:30, if that worked with anybody else. Or six, if six works fine, but I just think seven.
Seven, yeah. Yeah, I would, I would prefer to move it to 5:30 or six, and I know that 5:30 presents a problem for some people.
Yeah, I'd like to keep it at six, just in case. I mean, most people get off work at 5:00, and if they really want to make a board meeting, they could at six, but 5:30 might be a problem.
So we should probably have a motion to that effect.
I'll make a motion to keep it the third Monday, change the time to six. Second.
And we have a motion second, any agreement about it? Does anyone say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, and motion carries five zero. And without it being part of the motion, we will continue to try to move the meeting back and forth between the Sac County and Lakeview.
Especially since we're doing all this work in the building, so we kind of need to get hit everyone and see what we've got.
Have any reservations, do they? No. Contracts. We do have one. Let's see. The only contract that we have is for head girls' basketball coach, that contract is, goes to Kyle Strive, who has been hired as the new high school physical education instructor. Kyle graduated from Manning High School, played ball, basketball for, varsity basketball for three years at the University.
I didn't bring the contract, so I don't have to mount for you. He's on step one of our coaching schedule.
So, you motion to approve that contract?
We have a motion to approve the contract, we hear a second.
Second.
And a second, any further discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Discuss future agenda items and updates.
It'll be August 1st, be it two hearings, do a special meeting of files?
That will be two hearings, it'll be published as two hearings. Finish one, bid on the other, although I just got, I don't know that anything in the second hearing isn't going to be said in the first one.
That's two, because we're at that, right?
Yes.
And then we'll have a special meeting.
We'll have a meeting following.
Oh, and follow that hearing.
To take action.
Yeah.
Before so does last.
And our regular meeting will be the third Monday.
Right, it's the 15th.
It's the 15th.
Sac Elementary.
I would encourage that, yeah.
It would be fine, I think.
And by then, projects will be, you know, we'll be able to tour and see what that building looks like.
I'll move in here.
I'll second.
Second to adjourn, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.